Evening, everyone. Welcome to Bellefonte Borough Council Work Session. No council action, making motions or approvals is taken during the work session. We are in budget season, and tonight we will be talking about the Fire Department Fund and Special Projects Fund. Ms. McGowan, you're up.
Welcome back. So, tonight, we do have both the Fire Department Funds and the Special Projects. The Fire Department has two funds. They have the Fire Department Fund, which is the operating fund, and the Fire Equipment Fund, which is the fund that we use to pay for the loans on the equipment.
So, Laurie, do you have your microphone on?
Yeah, I do.
Or is it case I look closer? Thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
So, the first one is the operating fund, and it's just what it says. It's where the stipend's paid from. It's where all the operating costs, maintenance on the equipment.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Bellefonte Borough Council Business Meeting. Before this meeting, council met an executive session regarding personnel and real estate issues. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I don't know. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Clayton?
Mr. Bernier.
Here.
Mr. Brackville.
Here.
Ms. Clayton, here. Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
I'm here.
Ms. Meckley is excused, and Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. In accordance with Act 65 of 2021, if a matter is not on the agenda, council cannot take official action on it, with some exceptions. The council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through a majority vote. The council should state the reason why the action item is being added to the agenda. Does council have anything to add to the agenda tonight? Public comment. Borough council intends to take public comment related to the motion that is on the floor after it has been duly made and seconded. The order of comments will be public comment, then council comment, including proposed amendments by council members. If amendments are proposed to the original motion, the public will then only comment on the amendment before final votes are taken. You must be a Bellefonte resident, a nonprofit representative, a business owner, or an official representative of another governmental agency. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and street municipality if outside the borough of Bellefonte. Comments are limited to three minutes. Under Communications, you'll find in your packet the Mosquito Disease Control Coordinator's end-of-year correspondence. Also is the Spring Creek Watershed Commission Water Resources Monitoring Project 2026, contribution of $3,145. Could I have a motion and a second to include the $3,145 in the tentative budget for 2026 for the Spring Creek Watershed Commission Water Resources Monitoring Project?
I'll make that motion. McKean.
Thank you. Shawna?
Second, Sedgwick.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, please? Could we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Exception to Section 404.3 of the Center Region Building Safety and Property Maintenance Code for 107 South Ridge Street. Council may take action on this. It would be recommended that we ask staff to research this more before we make any decision on that. Is that agreeable to council?
So, I'll make a motion to table this until staff has reviewed it and to make a recommendation.
Do you want to speak?
Thank you.
The property, sorry, the property, public comment is a bit different than it used to be, I guess.
Yes, it is. And it's very, it gets...
It's confusing. The property owner for this property is here to, would like to speak for public comment.
Okay. Council, would you consent to letting him speak?
Absolutely.
Great. We would like that. Thank you so very much.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Zeb Smoyer. I reside at 107 South Ridge Street. Hello?
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Zeb Smoyer. I'm a borough resident. I live at 107 South Ridge Street, and I am before you requesting the exemption that was stated before to a particular part of the property maintenance code. I wrote a letter to you all that was included in your package. If, I understand your interest in letting the staff have an opinion on this, but if you guys have any questions at the moment, I came to make myself available for any of your personal questions, or to resummarize my letter, if that would be of interest to you.
Great. Thank you for being here. Does anyone on council have any questions?
I'd like to make comments on this. I think, I looked at this letter, and all he's asking is for the, he wanted to raise the ceiling to seven feet, and it's only at, what, six feet, I believe. Am I right on those numbers?
Yes. There's a, the part of the building maintenance code. I'm applying for a rental permit. I'm a borough resident, but I'll be moving out of town for a couple of years. I wanted to rent my house out in the meantime. And part of the borough code says to get a permit, the ceiling of habitable spaces need to be, needs to be seven feet tall. The second story of my house, which is an older house, doesn't meet that. The ceilings are shorter than seven feet tall. And I was denied a permit for the bedrooms that were on the second floor for that reason. And I'm requesting that the borough reconsider their adoption of that section of the code. The code itself was written and recommended by the Center Region Code Administration, but as my letter stated, there is precedent in the Center Region and across the country for exemptions to the seven-foot, the seven-foot rule for, for older houses. And so, that's what I'm requesting today.
Gina, if he were to take his space, and, you know, I've seen this done in other homes where they take out, say, the drywall that's there, and expose the beams and put drywall between, would that raise it enough, or would it end at the beam?
There is a section in 404 of the property maintenance code that lists exceptions to the seven-foot minimum ceiling height requirement. And I think, I'm not the code person, but it says here something about with not less than six feet four inches of clear height under beams, girders, ducts, and similar obstruction. So, do not answer your question officially. I think that there, there's some leeway there when they're measuring for beams and different obstructions that are at the ceiling height.
Yeah, so if push came to shove, that would be one option, but I'm on your side.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Joanne already did, right?
I did, and no one seconded it.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Randy.
I'd like to approve the question that he's asking to maintain it as it is right now. It's a farm, what, the house is like 1910, so it was before code. And I've seen other places in Bellefonte that had gotten approvals to leave it at the height it is. It's funny, I was watching the Halloween, or the TV show that was going around the country, and their kitchen was seven, or six feet, and that's exactly where he's at. And what they did, they looked up in, and everything was already there. They didn't want to, they didn't want to take the ceiling out because they'd have to take the boards and everything. It's just, it's just a waste of time, a waste of money. And so, that's why I was, it's not that big a deal to just leave it as it is and go with it. I'm not really sure everything we said, except that it's not that big a deal. Talk about two inches. Two inches ceiling is six feet.
Kent, we don't have a second on that yet. It needs seconded first.
We're talking two inches, so I have it. It's not that big a deal.
Kent said he seconded it. So, we can have more discussion on this if council would like to. I would still recommend that we give this back to staff to research and bring it back to us, but you can do what?
I, do you want to?
No, I was just going to say maybe council can have their conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Provide info from staff, because I think we can maybe clarify.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm, I don't believe that council has the authority at this meeting to approve the...
the height, lifting the height regulation. What council can do is look to reopen up the Property Maintenance Code and amend that section, not tonight, but I guess begin that process. But this, if, if Mr. Smoyer wanted to have this height restriction lifted, he would have to go through the Housing Appeals Board, and they would be the ones to determine whether the exemption could be granted. What he is asking of council is to actually amend this section in the Property Maintenance Code to eliminate or modify that minimum height requirement. So just to clarify that for you.
Thank you, Gina.
I'm not clear in what you're telling us, because we had, we've had houses that were fathered in and all this stuff, and now you're telling somebody who has a house older than dirt that they can't do it?
Right. We, council does not have the authority to do that.
We can recommend.
What you'd be looking to do, Mr. Brackville, if you wanted to enable Mr. Smoyer to, excuse me, if you wanted to enable Mr. Smoyer to get a rental housing permit based on what our current Property Maintenance Code stipulates, he, he would have two options. One would be, as Gina pointed out, to appeal to the Center Region Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals. Now, the lens that they're gonna look at is purely from, was the code interpreted properly? And I don't think you're arguing that it wasn't interpreted properly. So I don't think that that would be an avenue for success for him. The only alternative would be for Borough Council to consider an amendment to the Property Maintenance Code that would essentially either reduce that requirement from a seven-foot ceiling height to something that you thought was more appropriate, and it would be an exception that would apply to all borough-owned properties within the municipal boundary, only for, for Belfont Borough. Wouldn't apply to the other municipalities in the codes, the Center Region Code agencies' purview. But that would be something that would have to be effectuated through an ordinance amendment that would modify that particular section of the Property Maintenance Code. Only after that were to take place could he, Mr. Smoyer, then reapply for a rental housing permit, and then it would be reviewed by the Center Region Code Agency utilizing that new language, that reduced ceiling height requirement, whatever you might think is appropriate to set it at. What, what I think has been suggested and might be a good next step would be for staff to research some of the, the reasoning behind that seven-foot ceiling height requirement, what some of the other municipalities, because I think as Mr. Smoyer points out in his letter, it's accurate, that some of the municipalities have provided some kind of grandfathered, if you will, considerations for some of those older, older dwellings. So we can be prepared to come back to council with a recommendation based on, you know, what some of those concerns might be that, that you may want to consider as part of your determination whether you want to amend that Property Maintenance Code provision or not.
So council can't take an action except to send it, the recommendation be to, to ask the staff to research it and bring something back?
Point of information. So you're saying that what we should be doing, instead of voting on this, have an amended motion to have, to review and then send it to the Ordinance Ad Hoc Committee to, to do this, or, or what?
Joanne, I, I think, make it really simple. Just amend the motion that we give direction to the staff to, to search other templates of this nature, which Mr. Smoyer has pointed out in his letter. Make a recommendation at our next meeting based on that. So we're not trying to delay your decision. We're, it looks, it sounds to me like it's, it's a reasonable step for us to send this back to Borough Staff, have them look at the same adoption that they did in Harris Township, I think it is.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Harris Township, where they amended that based on the, the date of construction of the house. And I, I think, I think your suggestion of 2004 might be, I'd like to see it go back a little bit further than that, but I, I think it's a reasonable one, and I think, I think our staff could probably come up with a pretty good solution to amend our ordinance that would help you out. So if you want me to amend the motion, I will. If not, that, that would be my suggestion, to pass, amend Randy's motion, to pass it along to Borough Staff. At our next meeting, have, have a proposal to modify the code for Section 404.3. That may help Mr. Smoyer out, or others in the same situation.
So we will need a second for your amended motion?
We already have two, we already have a motion on. I'll take my motion away, because we already had a.
Well, the motion to table never got a second, so that is moved. So then yours became the first motion, and Shawna seconded it. If you want to remove it, both of you have...
Kent seconded it.
Well, whoever seconded it. You two can agree to remove it, and then we can make his the main motion.
Right. So I said, I'm gonna remove it.
Did you second that, or did Kent? Kent? Oh, you both did. Would you two mind removing your second, please? Thank you. So Doug, your motion is on the table, and we need a second for that.
Second, Clayton.
Thank you. Deb? Is there any other discussion on this tonight?
Yes. Just to, to let you know, to provide more information before we vote on this, to, to let you know what Walt Schneider mentioned at the HARB meeting last week when this was discussed. He, he said, "The second floor has a ceiling that is less than seven feet tall." He explained why there is a seven-foot minimum height particularly for rental properties. When most of the buildings in our historic district were built, they were built and furnished with natural products, wood, cotton, wool, et cetera. As we moved into the latter part of the 20th and 21st centuries, we have packed our homes with more stuff, and stuff made out of plastics and other synthetic products that burn much hotter than wood, cotton, and wool. He explained that when a room catches fire, the burned products rise to the ceiling. With lower ceiling heights, the explosive combustible products fill the room much more quickly, and then can bust or flash over, leaving less time to escape a burning room. Modern furnishings made of synthetic materials produce more heat and flammable gases, causing fires to burn hotter and faster than in the past. A fire can engulf a room in just 30 seconds with modern furnishings and lower ceilings. It takes a bit longer. The estimates range from two to three minutes for a fire to engulf a room with a taller ceiling, especially if it has fewer modern furnishings with synthetic materials. So I will go ahead and vote yes on this, to review it, but that's the basis for the reason in our codes, the way it's currently written.
That is correct, and I assume we'll have more discussion on that after we have a little more information, too. Thank you, Joanne. Any other discussion?
I'm not sure what, what you have in your house. I mean, has that ever been worked on before, to change anything on the roof or on the ceiling?
Uh, no, the ceiling has not been.
So it's original?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So there's other products out there that are fireproof, without getting into the, the stuff that Joanne was talking about, to make it safe as well. So what she's talking about, it'd take a while to get everything in there.
I think, I think we can have this discussion after the, the amendment to the, this is all important information after we have the, the amendment that, that's being created.
Yes, yes.
So we'll hear all that during that process.
That is correct. So could we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, so we're voting to send, send this to staff for more information and research.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Recommending.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
And Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you.
May I add, I'm curious. I know that the staff has been in light communication with the Code Agency. Is there anything more, more in particular that you guys want our staff to have conversations with Code about, since I know some conversations have already happened?
I think we'll take care of that, and we will have this on the agenda for two weeks from now, more than likely. So you would certainly be welcome to come back then.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Next, under Communications, the property located at the end of Oak Lane in Belfont has concerns of water runoff. This has been deferred to Public Works Superintendent Matt Aman and the Streets Committee, so there is no council action required on this. The stage at Tally Ram Park Design. This communication was from one of our residents, and she is concerned, can't pull it up here right now, that we keep the stage within the beautiful architecture of Belfont, and we certainly will do that as we work with HARB through the, the stage designs. The farmhouse demolition letter. This was a letter from Sadie Belsky that was in your packet. And the Belfont Area Sustainable Farmhouse is the next one. And that is also in the packet for your information. Under Consent Agenda, "All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of council request specific items to be removed for separate action." Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second, Clayton.
Thank you. Any discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports. Mr. Mayor, do you have something for this evening?
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank Giant Food Stores for their donation for our trick-or-treating event. Chief Whitmer and myself and our wives once again went out throughout the town, and Giant donated applesauce, and it was a big hit. And it was great to see all the kids and families trick-or-treating, and it was just really nice, and we were very pleased with how busy it was and how respectful all the, the kids and families were. It was really nice to see. It was a good event once again. And Chief actually saw some future police officers, so some, some little kids who aspire to be a police officer someday. But it was, it was really nice, good event once again. So thank you, Chief, and I want to thank Giant for their donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our junior council member is out tonight, so we will move on to Gina and OCA.
Good evening, council. There are two HARB certificates of appropriateness for approval. The first one is 32 West High Street, which is the train station. The Belfont Historical Railroad Association received a grant to install a replica of the Liberty Bell. It's a part of a larger program called Bells Across America, and so they will be working with HARB. There were two locations, which more information is in your, in the details of your packet, but there are two locations that they're considering, but both have been approved by HARB. And then the second item is 227 North Allegheny Street, which is the replacement of 16 windows with the materials and the designs that were presented at the HARB meeting last week.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the issuance of certificates of appropriateness for the following projects as Gina just mentioned?
Sir, Lou Brackville.
Thank you.
Second, Tosti Vacy.
Was there any public comment on either one of these? Nothing? Okay, any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
And Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we have a motion and a second to approve the demolition of the Beaver Farmhouse at 1002 Airport Road requested by Belfont Area School District?
So moved. Clayton.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Kent. Do we have public comment for this? Yes. Please come up, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sadie Belsky. I am from South Main Street Pleasant Gap. I want to start off by saying good evening, and thank you, Mayor Johnson and council members, for allowing me to speak. I am a graduate of the Belfont Area School District, as well as a current fifth-year architecture student at Penn State, and I am here in support of preservation and keeping the Beaver Farmhouse. As an architecture student, I spend years studying adaptive reuse projects just like this one, the practice of repurposing historic buildings for modern needs. This practice is, is a standard across Europe and increasingly embraced in the U.S. because of its sustainable and sensible approach to building. But beyond sustainability, this building is a teaching tool. Students could learn traditional building structure, building methods, agricultural heritage, and local history, not just from textbooks, but from real structures that they can see and touch and experience. These opportunities are disappearing every day as we demolish more historic buildings. What makes this opportunity so exceptional is that extends far beyond the school district. This project could serve as a model, not just for our students, but for our entire region, demonstrating how historic preservation and cutting-edge sustainability can work together. In a time when communities everywhere are grappling with how to honor the past while building for the future, Belfont has a chance to lead by example. This farmhouse could, could inspire future students the way historic buildings and sustainability inspired me to pursue architecture. It could teach them that preservation and progress can work together, that sustainability does matter, and that our community values both creativity and a connection for, to our past. This is a rare opportunity, and I urge you all to take a second consideration at demolishing this piece of history. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sadie.
Good evening. My name's Matt Maris. I am a historian and educator. I live in Benner Township, 358 Leap Street, just over the, the line. So I know, we live in a community that cares very much about history, so I'm preaching to the choir, but I just wanted to weigh in on the farmhouse and preserving it, or at least giving it some more time to really take a hard look at, at its history and make sure we make the right decision. So thanks for hearing me out. As far as its history, it goes back to probably the 1850s. It's definitely pre-Civil War. The Valentine family is associated with it, owned the property, owned the farm in the 1830s, and then the house is probably there by the 18, by 1860, before 1861. It shows up on the Tilden map in 1861. It's also on the 1874 Pomeroy map with the name J.D., Jacob D. Valentine. He is the famed Quaker iron master that the Valentines were associated with. So it's got the, the age, it's older than this building here, the armory, it's older than the Reynolds Mansion, the R Fair Lady, all the, all the houses on, most of them on Lynn Street and Curtin Streets. So it's got the age, it's got the association with names, it's got the Valentines, it's got the Beaver McAllisters associated. They're neighbors, you know, direct neighbor with the Beaver McAllister, or the McAllister-Beaver Farm. So they would have been mutually working together, and they would have been at the same things, like, I came across this, a famous, or a very interesting, or agricultural fair predating the Grange Fair, were held on the McAllister-Beaver Farm in the 1850s. It would have been also on the Valentine Farm, and they owned several farms on that flat, they used to call it. And so... And so they would have been participating in some of the first county fairs in Pennsylvania. And because the McAllisters were so, Hugh McAllister was so important to starting Penn State, that you could say that the Valentine Farm and the McAllister Beaver Farm were elemental to Pennsylvania's agriculture and Penn State.
Mr. Maris, you have 30 more seconds.
Okay. So, the history has the architect, it might not have the grand architecture of a mansion that we usually protect, that's got gingerbread features, but it's got the story, it's got the names, it's got the age, and it's got the architecture. It's just a different form of architecture. It's not an elite form of architecture, it's a common farmhouse, and therefore it symbolizes what farming was really like in the 19th century in this county. So please consider taking some time at least, or preserving, and I'm asking all parties involved to take a hard look at it. Please.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I start rambling about history, so...
You're fine. It's hard to keep that, three minutes.
I live at 133 North Spring Street in Bellefonte. I also happen to be the president of the Bellefonte Historical and Cultural Association, but I'm mostly speaking for myself. And forgive the speed with which I'm going to read this, because it takes exactly three minutes. "Who destroys our memories? The modest house we speak of this evening is bigger than a statue of some long-dead military hero. It's also a more honest expression of its time and history than a bronze triumph on a pedestal, because it grew from the needs of a forgotten man, not the machinations of a forgotten committee. Statues represent exceptional people, long remembered, but this house represents the rest of us, soon to be forgotten in our own time. Can we treasure a mundane artifact? I think so, especially if it is rare. This house was built before the Civil War, perhaps even before the reign of Queen Victoria. If that's the case, it predates Victorian Bellefonte and is among the handful of ancient structures that remain in our town. It has been standing in its little hollow for more than 150 years, occupied by four or five dozen souls. I imagine they mostly worked the soil and made little impression on the contemporary politicians and captains of industry. We still celebrate the bushes, the beavers, the curtains, and the bracharrhoffs. This modest building is a memorial for those forgotten folk. It tells their story as well as any tombstone. This small house and the sliver of land it stands on show us how it was for our forebears. Its isolated location allows visitors to hear whispers from the past. Shall we tear it down and forget them? You might as well pave over Union Cemetery and get more parking. This modern world pushes hard on us, and the one way we remain upright is by leaning on the past. Any old building, but especially this one, because of its modesty, its age, and location, can help us hold on to our original nature. Somehow, it has been spared, and we now are going to demolish it? Certainly, the old building presents a problem to the school district. It's an attractive nuisance. If there were only a patch of rough gravel where this old homestead once stood, there would be no problem. For the cost of demolishing it, a problem is solved, but there is a significant non-monetary cost. Vandalizing the history latent in an ancient building's walls is bad enough when motivated by desire for commercial gain, but heartbreaking when motivated by a desire for administrative convenience. The problem posed by this residue of Bellefonte's early life might be solved by just securing the building and buying adequate insurance. Finding a new use for the structure could also lessen the burden of having it on the district's books."
Sir, you have 30 more seconds. You're doing great.
Perhaps a small parcel of land with the building could be transferred to another owner, completely removing it as a problem. In fact, the costs of alternative solutions to the district's problem might be less expensive than removing this house from our landscape. Demolition is the most regrettable outcome and should be avoided. Finally, this house has friends. Congressman Glenn Thompson, students and teachers at the high school, a Penn State professor of architecture, and other people in town care about it. Let's look hard for an alternative solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Mickeen Porman. I live on Porman Lane in Mingoville, Walker Township.
Hi, Mickeen.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm speaking from an agricultural perspective. I'm an agriculture teacher at the high school, and I've been teaching there for 17 years. I know I'm only one person, but my students are many. When I told them about the possibility that this house was going to get torn down, they said, "What can we do? How can we help?" You saw someone here tonight, and you may have heard from others. I've worked for years on a project and plans to try to restore this house and do so sustainably. I know another building could give us an outdoor classroom space, and that would be awesome, but the purpose is to restore this and do it sustainably, preserving the history of the area and the agricultural piece and educational piece that goes along with that. We had an awesome collaboration with the Penn State architecture students with real-world scenarios, and it's hard to get that with new construction. Bellefonte Building Supply has offered to winterize the house at no cost. The owner that I spoke to loves the idea that I presented about restoring it sustainably and using green energy and materials. He said that structurally, from the outside, the house is very solid. He even kind of joked that the walls were probably 12 to 16 inches thick. That stone that built the house was off of that land, and it's the same stone that built Governor James Beaver's mansion as well. Agricultural friends, Dan and Penny Ulmer rented the farm from Jim Beaver, and he is the one that shared about the stone on the property. Congressman G.T. Thompson has pledged to give $5,000 this year to a restoration fund and more next year, and will also help to promote it. There is a huge agricultural value. Farming was ordinary back then, and we tend to overlook the ordinary, but it's not ordinary anymore. It's rare. Its modesty is what makes this house so valuable, and there is a need to represent all socioeconomic peoples, and I think it's an injustice to do otherwise. Agriculture played a significant role in the iron industry here in Bellefonte. I would like you to please consider to keep the agricultural and educational heritage, and please consider saving this amazing educational opportunity for the students of Bellefonte Area School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickeen.
Hi, I'm Bob Daniker. I live on Howard Street at a stone house, a little bigger than the one in Subject, but it's still solid and standing there, and I'm a preservationist. I have seen this farmhouse in Subject from here many times and from a distance. And about two years ago, when the development in that area was getting started, because I own a planning commission, I wanted to get an idea of the land. And so I went down there. And I didn't go in the building or anything, but the building, it's just, my impression was such a solid building there. It's a simple building, probably because it was a simple farm. And not only is the building there, but the footprint of the barns and other accessory structures are there. It's concrete, it's small walls and everything. And I just hate to see another building in Bellefonte torn down. I believe that the school district could probably find a use that would be educational in a form of even bringing Vo-Tec people in, maybe to do minor work on it architectural. And there's a nice garden plot there that's fenced in, that's bigger than this dusk here. So I think there's some obvious things that we could do that are different than just making up a rubble, pile rubble out of it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
The district, would you like to speak at part of this, or if it's the Bellefonte area, is there a question?
If you want to come up and speak, that would be great.
All right. Hi.
Thank you.
Tom Land, Director of the Physical Plant for the school district. I've been with the district for two years, took over for Aaron Barto, kind of inherited the situation we have with this farmhouse. I have some photos here, I'll pass around. There's some interior, exterior photos. I appreciate all the stories, you know, learning all the history. Moving forward as a district, the new facility, the new sports fields we have down there, the feasibility of this building remaining where it is, from my standpoint, is hard for the district. There's a lot of liabilities. I know there are a lot of options, everyone's opinions come into play, the history of the whole place, but there are other things we can do with the land, more educational. The house itself, you know, my heart is pulled by some of the stories and some of the history, but, you know, to have that as an educational space with ADA compliance and having it up to what is needed as a district, I don't think that's something that the district can handle. So feel free to look at those pictures, and if anyone else wants to say anything.
Hello, I'm Roy Roxowski, Superintendent, Bellefonte Area School District. Thank you for your consideration of this request, and understand there's a lot of sentiment attached to the building itself. From my lens, as the chief school administrator, it's my job and responsibility to adhere to our mission. Our mission, the reason we exist, is to promote effective teaching and learning. And this building, this space as it is, does not provide a viable space for education. And as you can see from the photos, the condition that it's currently in is so far removed from that, that I feel would be irresponsible to the taxpayers of the Bellefonte Area School District to attempt to make it a viable educational space. We prefer to use our tax dollars in an efficient manner and an effective manner to get the most bang for the buck for our students and our teachers, and to support teaching and learning. Thank you.
Hello, John Gazzar. I'm Bellefonte School District Board President. I concur. We are very sensitive to historic buildings and the nature of refurbishing buildings. However, as you know, and as has been stated, we're not in the business of restoration. We bought that property with the understanding to develop that for educational purposes and our school needs. The building itself, we've owned it for more than two decades, or nearly two decades. I myself was one who voted to postpone demolition about a decade ago, to see if we could come up with a viable path forward for this structure, and we've not been able to do so. We've had some sketches, some ideas, some great ideas, but the issues are that, again, it doesn't meet board policy for our education specs for any spaces that we build. We've made a commitment that any space that we build is ADA compliant and must be wheelchair-accessible. This building, it would be extremely cost prohibitive to even consider that, not to mention the fact that it would not retain its historical value if we tried to put elevators and regrade things for having ADA ramps, et cetera. As you know, as was stated here this evening, it's not necessarily up to the borough to make an exception. We have to change the code, and I don't see the code changing to allow non-ADA structures to exist. Not to mention that would be inconsistent with our board policies for having spaces that all students can learn. We can't have an agricultural program that's available only to kids who can walk, as horrible as that sounds, but that's kind of how we, one of the ways that we look at this. So it doesn't meet ADA requirements. It actually sits at the basin of outlet for all the runoff water for our new football stadium that was gone through full code compliance and been approved. It's the dump site for half of the water from our high school building, and is now the dump site for water, for all the water for a 100-acre farm that goes down to there and is now, has a retention pond that's about 40 or 50 feet away from the house. So all this water that goes down there and dumps in that site, that's another consideration. The space out there, and many of the things that were mentioned here this evening, they don't exist anymore. That site was completely regraded as part of the new Bellefonte Elementary School and regrading plan, so a lot of that stuff doesn't exist. It's no longer, there's not even a road to the house anymore. Now that the trees are gone, the places...
John, you have 30 seconds.
And the place is regraded. It's now becoming a security risk, as you heard others have admitted to trespassing. There's very clear signs of no trespassing on the site, but yet, now that the building is more accessible, we feel that's a continuing issue. As you may have noticed in the fine that we received, it wasn't just about boarding up the windows. We offered to do that, and we were told that that was not a viable option. They wanted stairs fixed, railings fixed, porch boards replaced, windows replaced. The building had to be repainted. And any of those things that you do and money that you spend on that is just prolonging the inevitable. We've determined over a decade now, there's no viable path forward for that building to be a reasonable educational space that meets both our ed specs and ADA requirements. And so therefore, we'd ask that you please vote to approve our demo plea.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this?
I would like to make a motion to table this till our next meeting, so we can get more information from both groups involved, and make an educated decision about this. I know there's a lot to take into consideration, particularly the access road, because you have to have that for public safety reasons.
Sir, move, Brackville.
Thank you. Any discussion among council?
Second, Johnson.
I think Deb made the motion.
Randy did get it. You may not have heard it. Great, thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Can we roll call?
Right. And we have now, there was a motion on the table to...
A motion to table supersedes a main motion, and at that point, all we can do is vote on the motion to table.
There'll be no more discussion tonight than on it. Is there anything else? Any other questions, comments? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier. Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Basie.
Yes.
Thank you. That's eight to one.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, do you have anything else? Planning Commission meets on Monday, the 10th. Anything else?
That's all. You got it. Just wanted to mention the meeting dates, so...
Okay. Great, thank you very much. We will move on to current and old business. The borough offices will be closed Tuesday, November 11th for Veterans Day. No council action is requested. There will be no brush or grass pickup on Wednesday, November 12th. The last day for brush and grass curbside pickup will be on Wednesday, November 19th. There is also no council action requested. The Complete Streets Policy Resolution Number 11032025-01. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the Complete Streets Policy Resolution, please?
So moved. Tosti Basie. Second, Cleaton.
Thank you. Is there discussion on this? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our Electricity Procurement Contract Bids. Could I have a motion and a second to award the electricity procurement contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, offering the most advantageous pricing based on the bid results and staff recommendations?
Do you have a motion?
Thank you.
Second, Brackville.
Thank you. Mr. Provoca, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So with your, at your desk is the most current pricing that we received from our energy broker in Byron, formerly APPI. They issued a competitive bid to a number of suppliers that met our criteria. And you can see kind of a summary of what is essentially a bid tabulation. The council has the latitude to authorize a contract to whichever supplier you deem to be most advantageous to the borough. The prior contract, which expires this month, was a multi-year contract beginning in 2020, well, beginning in 2021 effectively. And that was for, at the time, a very competitive rate of about 4.3 cents per kilowatt hour. The market, particularly on the supply side, has really taken a dramatic turn since that last contract. And so our pricing is essentially, under most scenarios, double what it was back in 2020, 2021, when the last term was awarded. I had a few conversations with not just our broker, but with Constellation Energy for their municipal utility program. The best pricing was offered through our arrangement with our broker. They priced out several different models. Essentially, a fixed rate term, which had three bidders. The same three bidders responded to a fixed term with capacity and transmission costs being passed through. And then the final, the third category essentially of bids is really entirely market-driven. It's indexed priced, capacity and transmission are passed through. This market is enormously complex, probably far more than I can do justice to in a narrative of an agenda item. But really, what the broker has recommended is highlighted in yellow there at .7264 cents per kilowatt hour. You would need to add to that .17 cents per kilowatt hour for capacity and transmission. And that could fluctuate from year to year. Staff's recommendation is to go with the fixed rate. I would recommend a term of 24 months to AEP Energy at a cost of .876 cents per kilowatt hour. That is, again, a fixed rate, includes all capacity and transmission. And it would be for a two-year term, which will allow the borough, I think, to take maybe a more strategic approach to this at the end of that two-year cycle, based on what the market is, you know, kind of indicating for pricing at the time. Whether we want to opt for a more variable rate through one of these other models or continue down that fixed rate price structure. These amounts have kind of been prepared for and have been factored into the budget. And if we opt for this term and fixed rate, I believe we would have sufficient funds appropriated in our budget to account for this new cost. So I can answer any questions to the best of my ability. But that's my recommendation at .876 cents per kilowatt hour for a two-year term through AEP Energy.
I'll make the motion to go with the staff's suggestion or recommendation. And I want to thank the staff for their due diligence in securing this rate for us. And I agree, the 24 months seems reasonable. Who knows, it could drop in 24 months and we could reinvest.
Well-thought thinking, thank you, Kent. Any other discussion on this before we vote? Yes, Joanne.
I'm, I think this is, as Doug said, is a good idea to limit it to two years because right now what we're in the middle of is data centers jacking up the prices of electricity for everybody. And that needs to get fixed. And I think for doing it over a two-year period, we might be able to figure out so that we will do it. The other thing that I think we might want to look to over the next couple of years is looking at possible ways for us to get renewable energy. Because I know that if we can put that into the mix somehow, we may actually lower our costs.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cletton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under New Business, Governor's Park Roof Repair to Pavilion. Volunteers from Faith United Methodist Church would like to volunteer their services to repair the pavilions in Governor's Park. All volunteers will have waivers signed along with certificates of insurance provided by the church and contractor. Could I have a motion and a second to allow Faith United Methodist Church and Daniel Zook Contractor to perform volunteer work along with providing materials for repairs to the pavilions in Governor's Park?
So move, Brackville.
Thank you.
Who's second in line?
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this?
I'm assuming they are insured.
That's, they will be, yes.
Yes.
That's part of it, that we wanted. I think this is a great opportunity for the borough and also for the church and everybody that's volunteering. This is really nice.
Absolutely, it's nice.
It's great. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Steph?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cletton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
And Ms. Tosti Basie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Council may consider joining the Pennsylvania Municipal League and allocate funds in the 2026 budget for the membership fee. Member benefit information has been provided in the packet. Council may take action on this. I noticed there was not a lot of information in there. I was hoping that maybe we could also table this and have more information next time. Would that be okay, Joanne?
Yeah, you need to have somebody make the motion.
I know that, yeah.
And then, I know that Dave said he has a contact from PML that they could actually come in at maybe the next session or whenever it works for them so that we can get more information.
Thank you, yeah, I do think we need more, more information.
So I'll make that motion to table until we have the representative from PML come in and talk to us.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second to Cletton.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
No.
Ms. Cletton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Basie.
Yes.
Thank you, it's seven to two.
Thank you. There was information in your packet regarding this. Council may consider adding the CNET Bulletin Board in 2026. The CNET Bulletin Board information has been provided in your packet. If you would like to discuss this, could I have a motion and a second, please? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion.
I like the idea. We were trying to become more transparent for the community. People watch CNET and by having this do our agendas on the screen, it gives a second option to the public to know what's going on in our meetings.
And it does cost more. I don't have that number right here, right now. It will cost more.
I read through it and it's, I think it's in between shows. They advertise what's coming up. Maybe David knows more about it than I do. And I'm with you, Barb. I forget, I read it and I can't remember if there's an additional cost.
There is. I did talk to Mr. Pobolka about this today, and it certainly is an option. But we talked about maybe that little bit of money that it would change that is to start doing an email service, whether it's Constant Contact or MailChimp for our residents. I think they would be more likely to see emails. And that's really a cut and paste, most of the time, to send out that type of information. It would only be for people who sign up. I'm not sure how many people watch CNET. Other, if they're watching the meetings, are they watching it at other times? And you can get all the agenda information on our website, too. So it's kind of a twofold thing that we were thinking about, maybe a better way to get more information and, as you said, Joanne, be more transparent with that. So we do have a motion and a second to consider the CNET Bulletin Board.
Before we vote, could we ask the people in the audience what they think about this? Is that a possibility?
I don't think so, no, thank you.
Just a thought.
Can we have a show of hands? How's that? How many people would look at CNET to see our agenda? One, two. Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please? This is to, I'm sorry, this is to add to CNET Bulletin Board services.
Mr. Bernier.
No.
Mr. Brackville.
No.
Ms. Cletton, no. Ms. Dan.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Ms. McKean.
No.
Ms. Purnell.
No.
Ms. Sedgwick.
No.
Ms. Tosti Basie.
No, and thanks to the audience.
Thank you very much, now we know. Last on our new business, the realignment of Airport Road, State Road 2002, to create a T-intersection with the school district's driveway, Governor's Road. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the deed of dedication as presented?
Johnson will make the motion to realign Airport Road, State Route 202, to create a T-intersection. School District's driveway, Governor's Park Road. I'll second that, Brackville.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Any discussion? Anybody like to add anything to that?
So maybe, since the school board is here, can they answer the questions? What? Just this, so that the public knows, can you tell where this T-intersection will be? Or did they leave already? Is it at where Airport Road makes that 90-degree turn?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask, so the people know what we're talking about.
It's up on the screen there.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cletton, yes. Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Basie. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes the new business. Is there any public comment regarding issues not on the agenda tonight? I'll now have council members who have comments for the good of the order. Mr. Bernier, can we start on your side tonight, please? Thank you. Shauna?
I don't have anything tonight. So, November 13th, 14, 15th, the High School Drama Club is presenting The Play That Goes Wrong. So if you need a good laugh, these are your dates, the 13th, 14, 15th. Ms. McLeigh is not here, but you can come and see her on stage.
Ah, that's-
She's fun to watch, but that's what's coming up at high school.
Great, thank you.
Nothing unless there's any questions.
Ms. Cletton.
Yes, just a reminder that tomorrow is Election Day, so get out there and vote because it does make a difference. And I'd also like to thank all the poll workers who spend very long days making sure that everything runs smoothly and that we're able to cast our vote. So thank you.
I have nothing this evening.
I have put together a meeting for Thursday afternoon at 3:30 PM with Tom Hexler and Doug, if he can make it by 3:30 or after 3:30. And we're going to be talking about this room and what we can do. I'm not sure where we ended up because I wasn't a part of it at that point. So we're going to try to see what we can do to either bring some of the speakers down, move the tables closer together and bring the chairs further up like we have it now. If you haven't been here, that used to be way back and you couldn't hear anything, it was just echoes. So we're trying to make it the best we can without having to do anything with the roof or the ceiling. So here we are.
Thank you, Randy. Joanne.
Two things. I, first of all, Deb, I want to reiterate what Deb's just said about the elections tomorrow. And the second thing is, could we have Dave Pobolka's detailed updates on the 2025 list of goal action items to be substituted for the one created at the beginning of the year so the public can see what we have accomplished so far? Right now, it's what you see there is January 1st, 2025, instead of what we know that we have accomplished.
That's a great idea, Joanne, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have nothing.
I do have something tonight. Alyssa, if you can bring up, I guess it really doesn't matter. That's the first one that I want to look at. This is the intersection of McAllister Street and High Street. Our Streets Committee, our Police Chief, Police Chief Whitmer and our Public Works Superintendent, Matt Aman, have all worked diligently to make this intersection safer. On October 28th, there was an accident between a passenger car and a school bus. Thankfully, there were only minor injuries. One block towards Howard Street, which is down from this. This is on McAllister, coming up on High Street. The next block down, there is a four-way stop at Wood Street and McAllister. This doesn't appear to be a very busy intersection as Wood Street is not really a throughway. There's just the residents may exit that way. So it's not very busy like this intersection is. I appreciate everything everybody has done with this so far. I do, these signs are great. They're only on this side of High Street, though. My question is, do we have to wait until there really is a serious accident? I'm not sure what the real answer is here. But it seems obvious to me that a four-way stop may make a difference. And I don't even know if we can do that. I don't know all the rules and regulations for stop signs. But I would respectfully ask the Streets Committee to follow up on this. Thank you, Doug, very much. Pardon me? Absolutely.
I've had a concern. I had written a letter to Barbara and Dave about the seriousness of people heading to school, taking their students to school and almost getting hit at the diamond. That's happened twice. I know that letter was referred to the police. But in this situation, I don't think there's really much the police can do because of the way the road's set up. I think it's a borough problem. It's something that has to be addressed by the borough, whether it's flashing crossing signs or speed bumps. There has to be something to slow people down. That's the problem. It's not the police not catching them. How are the police going to take off after someone? Where are they going to sit? You can't do it. This is a borough problem that needs to be addressed before somebody, like you said, Barbara, really gets hurt or killed.
Thank you, Shauna. I'll follow up on that, thank you.
I'll follow up on that as well. We just passed the Complete Streets Resolution this evening. And by doing that, when the Streets Committee starts looking at this, we can, if there's something that PennDOT says we can't do, we can use that resolution and the attached documents to help make it much safer. And we could, we have a, we now have a stronger test to show PennDOT that we can do these things that we've been wanting to do and have not been able to do so far.
Yes, since we passed that resolution.
Just to follow up with that, Joanne, we did a data study on McAllister and Howard, and it was not warranted based on the experts' information that was provided to us. So we can have another look at it, but it's not going to change the data.
You mean McAllister and High? And High. I know it's been looked into, and this was not saying that nobody did their job, but I am very concerned about it. And maybe it only goes that far. I also had someone that- I also had someone that contacted me with a question. There is a, an apartment building on Bishop Street at the top of the hill that at one point was a school, and it was donated to the borough, and there was a bell that was in there that was also given to the borough. Now, this was, this was, I think, in the seven, early 70s, and I'm just asking if anybody has ever heard that or would happen to know where this bell may be hidden, or if it even exists. You, you look like you were happy about that, Gina. But anyways, for what that's worth, I thought that was interesting, so thank you very much.
Barb, I do have one thing while we're talking about streets. It was brought to my attention, on Bishop Street and McAllister, at the crosswalk, the light over the crosswalk is not on, and then Bishop and School Street, and then Bishop and going up the ramp to the school. It does not appear that those streetlights are on. I, I believe we had conversation about this maybe a few years ago. Is there a reason that they can't be on? The school district does a great job, Friday nights, they have portable lights they put up for safety, but when you look, when you drive by there, there are streetlights that go out over the crosswalk, and they're not lit up. And I understand our electrician is currently out, but if that's something, Doug, maybe if we could look into.
Absolutely, I, I, I think it's pretty simple. We get the post number, the light number, and we contact West Penn, and it could be the bulb is burned out.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was another reason.
And it takes just what you did to let people know that it's not operating.
Great, thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Bishop and McAllister, and Bishop and School Street, right outside of Burger King, and then the one going up toward the school, right there. They do not appear to be on.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, can we have a motion and a second to adjourn?
So move, Brackville.
Thank you.
Second, Tosti Basie.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, we are adjourned at 8:44.